Alrighty, I would like to call the work session in order. This evening, we are here to interview three different firms to help us find Mr. Roberts' replacement. With that, we are gonna get...all three firms are gonna do about a half hour presentation, and then at the end, we will discuss. We will deciding on what we decide tonight, or...
You'll come to consensus tonight.
Okay. So, once we're done, we'll definitely ask your questions, each one, but we will work as a group at the end to help decide on which way we will go. With that...
I have a couple of things to say. So, in your package, so we're gonna start with Proffin, and then we will go to Jensen, and then GMP at the end. And what I let them know is, we don't have any set questions for them. It's an opportunity for them to kinda do a presentation, or conversational, whatever questions you may have. So, the first one is supposed to log on at about 6:10. She's on now, so we can jump in a couple of minutes early. And my suggestion would be in between not to have a conversation about them. I have no idea who is watching, and I don't think it would be appropriate for any discussion about one versus the other until we have an opportunity to hear from all three firms.
Are we able to ask them questions that we don't know?
Yeah, yeah, so they'll kinda give an overview. You already have their proposals.
Correct.
And really, it's an opportunity to kinda give you the kinda face-to-face overview, and then for you to ask whatever questions. They may have questions of kind of us collectively, and so we can go ahead, and unless anybody has any preliminary questions...
I have just one. Are we going to be speaking to the person who owns the business, or to the person who will be the representative? If they will need that group?
I'm not sure who all they're gonna have as part of their team.
Okay, okay.
Sonia Proffin, who is the CEO of Proffin.
Right.
Is the one that is going to be on the line, is my understanding.
Oh, because it sounded like Steve Worthington said project lead, so I wasn't sure. That's who I wanted to talk with.
Well, I don't know who all she'll have on.
Okay, okay.
Really, does it remind me what the budget for this until...
We didn't specifically budget an amount, because it's gonna stretch over two fiscal years. We have enough dollars in the legal line and other lines that we have within the council manager budget that we can cover the cost of any of these three. And if we're good, I'll go ahead and letter it. Hey, Sony, can you hear us? We can. We're welcome.
Good.
Good. I think they're all kinda frozen. It's 26 degrees outside. Hi, Dad. Oh. Well, we have a 30-minute time block set aside for you. The city councils here, and the majority of our department directors are also in the room. And I thought maybe just a real quick introduction of folks to get a feel for who's here. I'm Robert Strope. I'm the Grand City Manager. I'm the one that's been sent out the way. No, retiring.
Retiring.
Retiring this fall. So, Mayor?
Justin Rock. Mayor.
I'm Gary Bell, the police chief.
I'm Mike Boquist. I'm the committee development director.
I'm Craig Dugan. I'm on the council.
David Clay, council.
Mary Ann Meesner, council.
Ricky Joe Hickey, council.
Denise Wheeler, council.
Bullock King, council.
Hickey Tibbetts, human resources.
Heather Regevich, finance director.
Joe Sloan, building official.
Kyle Public Works.
Stu Spence, Parks and Recreation Director.
Amy Porter, property chief.
Yeah, I should've probably just clarified. Pretty much kind of a free-form conversation. I thought it would be a good opportunity for you to go ahead and hit the high points from your presentation, or from your proposal. Kinda walk through what you would envision, give you an opportunity to ask us some whatever questions you may have, and council can ask things as we kind of go through. But just kind of a 10,000-foot overview of kind of what you're envisioning, and why the council should consider you to take the next step with us.
I have a question. I kinda went back, and I kinda researched your company a little bit, and it has moderate hits all the time. It's about 5,000-plus per month. But I have a question. If, if we don't happen to like any of the candidates, like it doesn't feel good, do you will extend that six-week time? Or how does that process work if it doesn't feel good with us? With who you recommend it? Through Steve?
Thank you. How many candidates or applicants on a general? How many do you get? That will...and is this particular time of the year a better time versus another time of the year?
Yeah.
And then how many applicants do we, would you expect to get for our position? Not the ones that got screened out, but just the total package of applicants? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Sony, they don't look like they have any more questions. Do you have any questions for us? We have a few minutes before we have to slide off to the next one. Anything that we can kinda give you some insights on?
I would say four myself.
Yeah, the...our council is very committed to doing things together as a team, and making unified decisions. The only council committee that we have is the audit committee. Everything else is the council as a whole, and so I would expect that you would have one panel as the whole council that will be involved throughout, in addition to some other panels.
I've got one more question. I know you go ahead and do background checks. How in-depth is that? It just says background checks. I mean, does it go to the sex offender register, or national criminal database, or what? Fair enough. That's great. Thank you. Have fun.
So then, how many references will you check? Personal references? Do you ever ask for somebody who maybe at the front, try to find somebody who's maybe not happy with the city manager, and see why they're not happy with them? You can leave this aside, the positive resume, but I mean, the reference, but more of a fact-finding. Yeah.
I just have one question for you. Of course, as an interview, why should us as the city council choose your company over the others? What do you offer, you know, an experience? Basically, sell yourself to us. Why would we wanna choose your firm over the other two? I mean, that's what I always ask when I'm interviewing somebody. That's my question. Why would I pick you over someone else?
Yeah. That's terrible, because I'm an introvert, and I'm not a salesman, so that's my dreaded question. It's like, oh, no, let me take this out.
Sorry.
You know, we've been doing this for...my staff and I have been together for almost 20 years. You know, Steve's been with me for 14 years. You know, there's not much we haven't seen, and not much we can't handle. You know, I'm there. We can handle anything, really. We...boards, districts, you name it. And so, you know, we still have an office. We're not all, you know, we don't have some office personnel at home, or, you know, so our phones are there eight to five o'clock. You know, Barry has been there since 2005, and he manages the office. He manages contract, you know, everything goes through Barry at the office. And so, you know, you do get us 24/7 if you need us. You know, we give you our cell numbers. We're a very, we're a very tight group, and we're very greased. You know, I don't know if greased is the wrong word, but, you know, we work together very well, and we're very efficient. We don't waste your time and waste your money. You know, we're good at what we do, and we think we're the best. You know, we...that's why.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Pull the introvert out of me.
If Steve is our project lead, which I'm assuming he's the person who will be working with us.
Yes.
Okay. Will he be working on any other city managers at that time?
Right now, he does not, so yours would be starting, and I don't know...I'm trying to think of...he's kind of in the final phases. He's got the Synchros right now. He's doing an executive... He's doing an executive director for Synchros, which is a good job, but that's, that's going into his final stages and I know there's city managers in that one. But I don't, I don't believe he has one starting now. I've, you know, I've got proposals out and one might come in. But he's doing a parks director. Yeah, so, and the thing is, is, you know, each consultant can, you know, I never really, they never have more than five going on at one time and they're always at different stages. You know, and each recruitment has a busy start, you know, when he's interviewing, the screening, you know, that takes a two or three day chunk, but then he leaves with you, then it's two weeks until the final or three weeks depending. And so, you know, I load them and I never overload them to where that you don't get the customer service that you deserve.
I guess what I was thinking more, would he have other cities same size up ours and the candidates get spread, would be maybe sent to the same cities, the same candidate? Or do you not do that?
No, every, every once in a while we'll have a candidate that's in two, two recruitments. But typically, we'll, we'll ask them which is their, you know, which one, if they've, if they put an application in for two, we don't want to bring them forward to you and recommend them if we know their heart belongs to the other one and if they're going to get the other one. And if they think they have, you know, there's a high chance. So we don't, we don't want to put that scenario in you to where then you interview them and now we've got the same person's number one in both places and we knew his heart wasn't, you know, you weren't his first choice. So we, we interview two to find out, you know, why did they want to be there? That's one of our first questions when we interview is why LaGrande? You know, what, why? You know, what's, what's driving you? Oh, it's just another, you know, so we're, we're engaging that kind of stuff too. We want people that are going to be passionate about LaGrande, want to be in LaGrande and that it's their first choice.
Thank you.
Any kind of parting thoughts before we let you get back to your evening?
Parting thoughts? You know, we're currently doing your fire chief recruitment, so he's had a chance to work with my staff a little bit so he can talk about the greatness of my staff. Besides that, you know, good luck with you. This is kind of a scary time, it's kind of an exciting time to do a city manager. When I was on city council, we did a city manager search and I know it was, it's a big change for staff and the unknowns of getting somebody new in, so. But so best of luck if you don't choose us and, you know, still best of luck and we'll still be working with you on your fire chief recruitment. Again, I'm not a salesman, I'm not very good at this, so sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, you guys have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
And Mary Ann, it's, it's not at all uncommon to have people that are looking for this job to be in multiple at the same time. One of the finalists, when I got hired, was in another, was a finalist in another city.
I can understand that, but I just didn't want the same person who's working with us having two cities that he's jumping these people back and forth with. I mean, I don't need that. That's what I was asking.
Good question.
I mean, I know they'd probably be looking at another place, but I hope it's a different way of going through somebody else.
Who's queuing up our next queen?
Sounds real good.
Robert, can you recall the company we used to hire you?
Waters Holdon, either of those two cities?
Those guys are in Washington, they're in Portland.
So they don't, there's, there's, that company no longer exists? Okay, our next one is in the queue, so we'll go ahead and Can you hear us?
Sorry?
Just checking to make sure you can hear us.
Let me turn my, crank my volume up a little bit and try again. Let's test one more time.
Can you hear us now?
That sounds good. I'm guessing you can hear me okay?
Yeah, we can. Well, welcome. I'm Robert Shrop, I'm LaGrande. I keep looking at the TV, but the camera's over here, so. Robert Shrop, I'm the current city manager who is retiring this coming fall and really appreciate you sharing, spending some time with us. We have the full council and pretty much all of the department directors in the room. And so we'll go ahead and kind of go around your introductions and I think I kind of gave you an overview of what we were looking for from you, so I'll skip that part. And so we'll just kind of do the intros. Mary?
Justin Rock, Mary.
I'm Gary Bell, police chief.
I'm Mike Oakless, community development director.
I'm Karin Dudo, council.
David Clay, council.
Mary Ann Meesner, council.
Ricky Johicki, council.
Denise Wheeler, council.
Molly King, council.
Becky Tibbetts, human resources.
Heather Reikovich, finance director.
Joe Sloan, building official.
Kyle Carpenter, public works.
Stuspinz, Parks Recreation.
Emma Cornford, fire chief.
And I think that's all of us.
Well, fantastic, we have a full house tonight.
So we didn't have any specific questions. We thought we would just let you kind of talk about your process and then as we wander through, there may be some questions and then you'll have an opportunity if there's anything you'd like to further explore with the council, this would be a great time to do that.
Fantastic, that sounds excellent. And I've prepared a few slides just to have a little visual as we're talking through things, but before I pull that up, it's very nice to see everybody and meet everybody. My name is Amelia Wallace. I'm a senior associate with Jensen Strategies. I've been with the firm for, actually coming off of five years now, which is just wild, wild to believe, but it's been a, been a pleasure and it's very exciting to have the opportunity to speak with you tonight. So as requested, I didn't understand as, as the city manager just confirmed that there were any specific questions, so I've just prepared an overview of our team and approach, of course, which is all outlined in greater detail in our proposal that we shared, but I'm just hoping to provide a refresher as well as highlight some things that I think are important to understand about the values that our team brings to this work and things that set our team apart. So with that, I'm going to try to move through this pretty quickly because I'd like to hear your questions. So I'll try to save the remaining time for, for that and to focus on areas that are important to use our council, so. All right, does that look okay to folks?
It does. Looks good.
Fantastic. So as mentioned, I'm just going to provide a brief overview about our team, about our firm, our team, our recruitment process, the timeline. I also provided a few extra samples of our work and then we'll get to questions. So first of all, about Jensen Strategies, we've been working in this capacity for over 10 years as a firm, but our principal and founder Eric Jensen has served in different public administration capacities for actually several decades before starting, starting the firm. We are Oregon-based with a natural reef, but really we actually take pride in our Pacific Northwest focus. We feel it, it really brings an extra, an extra element to our work. Over that time, we've helped dozens of cities with their city manager and recruitment processes as well as for department heads, but we also have other services that we touch listed here, collaborative decision-making, which organizational development or assessments, policy analysis, and of course, I've also included our mission and values here and I'll highlight that, you know, one of the, another important aspect of our, our firm is that we are objective in all we do. We always operate as a neutral party, so we are just committed to effective, effective public service and governance. With that, our team, that's us, that's our core team. So while we have a broad network of folks that we have expertise that we have on contract exclusive to our, our firm, you may hear them referred to as subconsultants, but these three folks, including, in addition to our, our project associate who is a current NPA candidate at the, at Portland State University, when you give us a call, these are, this is who you're going to reach. Specifically for this work, we're anticipating that I would serve as your project manager with strategic support and oversight from Eric Jensen and of course logistic and administrative leadership from Emily, our operations manager, as well as the project associate that I just mentioned. So this is the crew that you would seek and that would be running the, the project show, but we also bring heavy hitters in our candidate review team. That's also known, as I mentioned, our subconsultants. This group is comprised of retired public administrators, mostly city managers actually, who have direct experience in the role. They review our applications, help source candidates and are kind of a critical, critical part of this team. And we included some of their resumes in the, in our proposal, but we build that team specific to the city, kind of responsive to the specific expertise that they need, so. And then beyond that, you know, of course, we have a formal review of our qualifications and our proposal, but I think what sets us apart beyond our, our technical experience is that we really strive to operate as effective extensions of your city team. So we take pride in building strong relationships with you and the partners that work for your city and to make sure that you have the staff support and capacity that you need to be, to make this a successful process from starting. From there, I'll talk a little bit through our proposal. So, you know, I'm sure many of you have been through hiring processes, there are many standard expected steps, so I'll just hit a couple of things that I think are meaningful about our approach. So first, it's essential to understand your city and your community. We know city management, we know recruiting. I hope that's, you know, why we're, why we're here talking tonight, but that means that we understand every community is different, whether that's where you're at right now or where you want to go. So to start off, we collect a variety of information, information from a variety of places. That includes conducting one-on-one interviews with council and upper level staff, offering surveys as well as facilitated input opportunities to make sure that we get a full picture. We want to make sure we have an accurate pulse of what we need, but actually, potentially more importantly, what that helps to do is create a broader, shared understanding of what that is from the council, across the staff, the community. What are those shared goals? And I also just want to note, you know, throughout our process, we strive to adhere to inclusive and ethical engagement principles. So particularly IAP2 for folks that are familiar, that's the International Association for Public Participation. We strive to involve stakeholders at the right level and right time throughout the process, so both at the beginning and end, when you actually go to meet candidates. And we also are very thoughtful about how we collect that information. We assure confidentiality to the folks that provide us input through this process to make sure that folks are treated respectfully and that we get the information we need, right? To make sure that any recruitment challenges are surfaced early and addressed as possible. So from there, we create a position profile, that's a summary of all of that information that, as I mentioned, serves a couple purposes. So first, it's a key hiring tool and a legal requirement under Oregon state law to allow the city council to, to meet legally in a consecutive session. It's also just an attractive way to share information about the role and your community, but as I mentioned, really most importantly, it's that cornerstone document that from beginning to the end of the process, you can always go back to to say, what is it that we said we were looking for? What is it that we, and all of our stakeholders who contributed their time, instead of what we're trying to look for? We found that really meaningful and the ones that we, many of these we've done. And I'll, I'll share a few additional examples from the ones that we provided in our proposal at the end. From there, recruiting, of course, that includes all the passive and traditional methods you would think of, happy to answer questions if there are any specifics about that, but we're particularly well networked in the, the city manager community, in the Pacific Northwest particularly, but nationally. We've found that that's really important for sourcing candidates. We actually recently surveyed from our past processes that the most common ways that people find out about our positions are through ICMA or direct outreach from our team, which I think really just shows the kind of personal, personal touch that we put on it. But as I mentioned, this is important to getting candidates, but also, as I'll mention a little bit later, it's important for vetting them too and making sure you have all the information you need. A last thing here on recruitment is that, just that our team from day one has been very committed to treating candidates with dignity. You know, that's not just the right thing to do, but it also reflects on your city and your process. If we take that seriously, representing, operating in that capacity. So we try to make sure that candidates are informed and that we can give them additional contacts and information that's helpful so that they can make good decisions for themselves as well and set everybody, everybody involved up for success. So then from there, once we built the candidate pool, we'll conduct a review and that's where we again are really tapping into that expertise of our retired administrators, present that information with recommendations to, to help you reach a decision, but giving you the information so you can reach the decisions that really work well for you. As I said, you know city management, you all know the rules. So we'll find you qualified managers and you'll pick which ones really meet your needs in that way. So from there, support and final selection, finals week as we lovingly call it, this is a full week designed to really fully evaluate the candidates, but also reengage your key stakeholders that you brought in at the beginning and make sure that your council has a diverse range of perspectives to make a decision that you can be really confident in. Again, happy to provide more information about what that looks like, but at the end of the day, after just a few busy days, we collect meaningful input, meaningful input from all those different stakeholders that I was talking about, the public, community leaders, staff, city leadership, peer city administrators, your partners and more individuals who have direct experience in the scene, which from past processes we've heard is very valuable. And yeah, all of that so you're ready to make a decision you're confident in. And then last, as I mentioned, I would, I would share a little bit more about, this is a really, a big strength I see of our firm, particularly as it comes through in the end here, which is vetting. I was reflecting actually, you know, over this process from when candidates apply, application review, interviews, online research that we do, professional references, reference interviews that we conduct, all of the interviews and panel processes over the finals week. That's six to eight different types of evaluation that our candidates go through in our process, depending on how you want to count. And our favorite backhanded compliment is actually that we're very thorough and, you know, it's true, it's true, we are very thorough. We try to leave stone, not to leave stones unturned, even if all signs are pointing for yes, right? Because at the end of the day, we don't shortchange commitment and a decision of this magnitude for your council. Because at the end of the day, we don't shortchange, uh, commitment and a decision of this magnitude, uh, for your council and your community. So as you know, we have a one-year guarantee, but beyond that, we just consider ourselves public servants. And we're really, we strive to be a best of your success, uh, start to finish, however we can. So I'm already talking more than I meant to, but just a few more pieces of information. So this is basically what I just said in timeline form. The bulk of this process is really that April, uh, March, April to July. And, uh, this is based on the initial RFP that was provided in the, um, sorry, the initial timeline provided in the RFP. And, uh, my first comment is just thank you. Um, my team is actually from doing this proposal, been very impressed by all the ways that your city and your outgoing manager have really set this process up for success. That is going to serve whoever you choose to work with going forward really well. So good on you. So yeah, as I mentioned about a four long process, um, that brings you up to, we would anticipate, uh, being able to hold a finalist league by July. So you would then be able to move into contract negotiation after that, um, and negotiate your start date. So it's a long timeline, but actually pretty accurate, right? As far as actually getting you closer to that person in the seat. I'll also just briefly, uh, say two, two more things. One is that this is a very strong time in our experience to recruit candidates, both from a real estate perspective, but also ones with families. And I'll also address the elephant memory, right? Which is that this is a challenging time to do recruitment. You're not alone in that. That is something that folks are experiencing across the board. So I will just say, while we never want this, the schedule also gives you enough time that if you were to get a batch of candidates that you're like, you know, just don't know if we see the winner in there, you have enough time that you could, um, re-advertise and get someone in the seat before the holidays and it gets hard to recruit again. So really you've, you've done yourselves a lot of favors to set this up for success. So bottom line is, uh, we know that it, it will always cost more if you don't take the time to get it right the first time. So I'll just say that in that, that vein, but, um, I'd like to promise a few other examples. So we promote on, uh, LinkedIn, social media, other places. Two of these are advertisements for, um, community meetings that we put out to the community, um, as well as, uh, hiring boards to make sure folks are getting information in a variety of ways. Also have a few more earthy areas. That's another piece we really love is, is getting a showcase, uh, all these great, great communities. And lastly, I'll, I'll turn it over to questions, but, um, you know, just a few, uh, final, final thoughts for you. I, I skipped over actually a little bit of my background at the beginning, um, initially, but, uh, of course you, you have that. But I did want to just end this by saying, you know, this would be a really exciting and, and special opportunity. Personally, I love city manager recruitments. I never thought that would be the case. There's so many other great types of projects we do. But since joining the firm in 2020, I've had the pleasure of working with, uh, probably over 15 cities. I didn't redo the count. I apologize. Um, over 15 cities on just city manager recruitment, uh, most recently serving with the city of, of Dayton. As well as many other department heads and, and other, other positions. But, um, outside that, I also need, uh, goal setting and strategic planning processes as well as, uh, major research reports and, and other, other supportive of our firm's projects. But over that time, I've just really come to appreciate what a beautiful and scary process, uh, this period can be for a community. Whether it's from a long period of tumult or a long period of grace, instability and progress. The importance of, of making that next step thoughtfully and, and taking time to have a thoughtful evaluation of where you are and where you want to go and what kind of leader you need to help get there is, um, it's a really beautiful thing to support. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll leave it there and turn it over. But thanks for everything you've done to, to set this process up for success and, uh, and we're proud of you.
I have a, a question for you. Um, going through your proposal and everything, and then on page, it seems like most of the interviewing that you're going to be doing is a Zoom even with us until it says that we will attend the executive session of the city council in person to present the results of our initial review process recommending up to four finalists. So we're not going to have any physical contact with you until that time, everything is going to be via Zoom with you?
Thank you for your question. Um, so that is how we scope it initially, just to be sensitive to cost savings. But in many cases, we've actually ended up changing the process. So we've done, um, sometimes we've had input sessions in public at the very, in person at the very beginning. We've also, we have, um, had requests to do interviews in person. That's something that we could discuss if, if the council was, um, was interested in it. But we just do that for, for cost savings, just to be sensitive to budget to begin with.
Thank you. On an average, how many cap, how many applicants do you get for a position like ours, a city our size?
Great question. And I thank you for adding for a city of your size. Although I will say, um, interestingly, you know, as you all know, candidate pools really changed over the pandemic. You know, we used to see, um, before I joined the firm, before the pandemic, I understood we would get sometimes 30 to 45 applications for a city manager position. For communities your size. Now the pool is not as high. I would say we get on average, uh, for a community your size in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 applications. The highest we've gotten is really only 25, uh, and even some of our stronger pools. But, um, what I'm really finding is that ticket is not quantity, it's quality. I was, I was really pleased, um, in the most recent search that I conducted, the city of Dayton, um, we had only about a dozen applicants, but all but one ended up meeting Benjamin. And they all had pretty, pretty compelling public sector backgrounds. So, um, we consider that, yeah, resulted in a strong bullet.
My question, I was kind of going through the different cities that you folks have worked with. Our city is a little more unique because where we're at, you know, we're not over on the coast. We're over here in the mountains that sometimes gets a little cut off from everybody else. How are you going to help us find someone that would like where we live? Cause I don't know, I'm looking at screen.
That's okay. I can adjust. It's the Zoom world we live in, right?
Basically, my question is, how are you going to help our community where we are different from others? Because there's times that we are a little more remote than you would on the other side of the state.
Absolutely. Thank you for your question. So first of all, I want to say that while we haven't done as many recruitment projects out in this area, um, over the last year and a half, I've actually been pretty intensely involved, um, supporting the city of Umatilla. Again, not quite, not quite next to where to you, but, um, much closer with a community engagement project where we've been intimately involved in the, the community. But, um, most centrally, uh, to your question, uh, there are two ways that we do that. Uh, one is the profile and one is word of mouth. So in that environmental gathering phase, uh, at the initial information phase that I mentioned, um, all of that input that we collect. A key piece of it is what do you like about your community? Why should someone choose to come join your community? So in a word, we translate that into a profile and into something that we can share with candidates. Beyond the profile, we also just talk a lot about the community. So folks have all different preferences, right, about their living. In a lot of cases, actually, we have candidates who are strong city managers who wouldn't live in the Portland metro. So it just actually has to do with them getting to know both your community and the candidate and making sure that everybody has good information.
A driven on average search like this, how many, uh, other searches of this, for a city manager of, of a city our size, would you be having at the same time?
Oh, you mean?
Yeah, at one time, yeah. So I mean, yeah, cause what I'm wondering about is candidates that you might say that they might like here, are they also going to somebody else? And so you're stretched, you're putting the same candidate several places.
Thank you for your question. Um, so first of all, um, at this time, uh, we have not committed to any other searches during this period. We do have active proposals in, but there aren't any other ones that I would typically be leaning at the same time. We also are pretty sensitive to that. So, uh, we haven't had this issue, uh, as much with city manager processes. We, we typically avoid directly overlapping recruitment periods just for that reason. But we do actually find that having multiple searches, um, can be a benefit for all the communities. Just because more visibility on the roles, additional conversation can sort of source additional candidates. But most specifically to your point, um, we find that, you know, different types of candidates kind of related to the past question are really drawn to different types of opportunities, you know? And so we, I, I almost keep a running list in my head of candidates that we've had in past searches who love rural areas, right? Who love, um, different unique community aspects, uh, that we try to directly engage, uh, to bring forward. So, um, all that's to say, uh, we typically don't overlap our processes. When we do, we're very thoughtful and we will be transparent about it. And we also strive to, to really specifically recruit for candidates that need, where cities need, not just a generic process.
Thank you.
I think that's their questions. Did you have any for us as a group?
Thank you. Um, well, I can ask, uh, there's so many questions that I would love to ask now, but, um, you know, is there, uh, or is the last time that you conducted this search, um, how was it conducted? Was it internal or, or conducted out of house?
It was out of house.
Were any of you around for that? I know it was quite a while ago, actually, at this point.
I, I was there too.
For part of it.
Fantastic. Well, I guess that aside, um, is there, um, well, actually I'll pause actually. I, I don't have any questions at this time.
All right. Well, thanks so much for spending the time and we'll get back to you shortly. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you so much. Much, very nice to meet you all and I hope you have a great evening as well.
Everybody wants to stretch their legs for just three minutes?
Everybody wants to stretch their legs for just three minutes?
Back and forth between San Juans and Portland, Oregon, where I have a boat. So spend a fair amount of time in Oregon as well as Washington.
You may have cut out there, Kate, but I think you're an elected official for a higher district. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Robert, I'd be happy to start on our presentation, but I would offer that if anybody has any questions during the course of the conversation, please feel free to jump in. I love an interactive process and that might be helpful in getting probably our most information across to you. Let me start by introducing the company. GMP is comprised of seventeen of us now, if my numbers are correct. We have expertise in all facets of local government ranging from fire, police, public works, planning, certainly city management. Our consultants, we have ten city manager consultants that have expertise ranging literally all over the United States, from New England out to Minnesota, Arizona, up to Utah, Montana, Washington, sort of Oregon, and Idaho. So we bring a lot of expertise in that area. Our process is one that has evolved, in my experience, over a twenty-three or twenty-four year period. If we follow the process that we outlined before, we have a very high degree of success. As an example, in the last three years, we have conducted somewhere in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-twenty-five searches. We've had one search that we had to go back and do a repeat on. So that speaks a lot to the quality of the consultants we have, the quality of the staff that we have supporting the search, and the process that we refine. It works and works well. Rather than going into too much more detail of the company, why don't we start with sort of an overview? And Kate, why don't you take the ball here and run with it a bit because you're the one sort of managing the day-to-day side of the search and working with the consultants?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. And if I'm cutting it out at all, please let me know. I apologize. I'm on my backup system after some IT issues today.
It's involving, you know, you can have me on your keyboard if I recall correctly.
Yes, yes. It was quite a day. So our process, as we walk through here, I'll give you a bit of an overview of what we would be doing here, kind of start to finish. It's about a ninety-day process that we'll follow. And we start with a kickoff meeting that we would have your team, which will be Richard, and your project manager, who will be Brenda Gavadis, that will be your dedicated team on this search. And they'll meet with your search team to review the timeline, answer any outstanding questions that you folks have on the process that we haven't already answered for you, and start to begin the collection of information that we need from you to get the profile design underway. We have a professional designer that works with us, published author and professional designer who does all of our profiles. She does an amazing job. So as part of that, we will be collecting data about the city from you folks. And we will also have Richard come do stakeholder interviews in which he will meet with the council, leadership, and any other important partner agency leaders or community members that you folks would like to have involved in that process. And I'll actually let Richard talk a little bit more about how he approaches those.
Yeah, the profile development is great and important. And really, it's the foundation for the whole process that we go through, especially here in Oregon. The profile ends up being your criteria and your, what you're looking for and what is going to happen in the recruitment process. So it's something that comes back to you. And so when, before it's actually out, you will get a chance to approve it and adopt it. And once you do that, we can then do the executive session meetings and everything that we need to do later on in the process. So it's fundamental in that way. But it's also so fundamental to get those details about the cultural, historical heritage that you have there, the interactions you have with Main Street and with economic development going on. And all of those pieces pulled together so that we have something that will not only be that criteria and those characteristics that we're looking for in a new manager, but also those things that will make existing managers excited about applying to go to La Grande. This is a piece that, you know, we look at the profile, we're selling your community. It is really important to sell the community and that location. We don't want just those managers that are unemployed right now applying. We want those managers that are employed and see something and say, hey, that's a place I want to go and stay for a long period of time. I mean, being a manager that was in a place for twenty-six years, Robert's been there for seventeen, that is beneficial to communities. And, you know, the normal tenure for managers right now in the country is somewhere between five, seven years, maybe a little less. Right now, having managers for a longer period gets you a chance to do those longer projects, to get more things done, accomplish things. And that's what we want to look for. We really want to look for that person that fits those characteristics. Sure, we'll have the criteria in there that, yeah, you got to have an MPA, or you got to have this, you got to know how to do this. Those are important. But the real piece that's important is, does it fit in your community? Does it match with all the things that you need to do or you want to do in the coming years?
Thanks, Richard. So I think that's a huge strength that we bring is the upfront work that we do here in really getting to know the community and what you folks are needing and looking for at this time. So that's definitely for us, a key piece of process here. So as Richard said, once we have a draft of that profile after he's done interviews and worked with our designer to get that put together, that'll come back to you folks. And you guys will get the opportunity to review that. And if necessary, we'll go back and forth on the edits and revisions that we need to make until we've got that right, to really match what you folks are looking for there at La Grande. So then, we will push that out to ad. And we will usually have that out for about a month is our desired timeline for that, so that we can really have the chance for that to get out, folks to see and learn about them, and collect a good range of applicants for you. And then we will do our, what we call
Before we move on, Kate, let me touch a little bit on the advertising.
Sure.
We're aggressive. We're very aggressive in our advertising. We're going to send out probably six hundred letters of invitations to city managers, all the city managers and administrators in Oregon, plus probably majority of those in cities of comparable size and complexity in the eight or ten western states. Send out over three thousand four hundred emails to city managers that we know. And plus, as I mentioned earlier, we have a cadre of ten former city managers, all of whom have a network of contacts out there. That's what we're going to reach out to. Additionally, we've done five or six, seven city manager searches here in Oregon recently. We're going to reach out to all of those candidates that maybe weren't quite a fit for that group, and try to talk to them about applying for this job also. So bottom line is, this is an aggressive process. We'll probably also place somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twelve ads in journals, periodicals, things of that nature. Any questions so far, by the way? Take a breath here.
Great. Thank you. So then, when we go into the screening process, Richard will go through and screen all of the applicants that we perceive. And he will choose, move forward into what we refer to as semifinal interviews. And he will do an in-depth, one-hour virtual interview. I apologize if there's any background noise. I have rustling dogs that just came into the room. He'll do a one-hour, in-depth interview with each of those semifinalists. And he will do consultant notes on each of those interviews regarding his assessment of each of those candidates. And we will provide you all with packets for each one of those semifinalists that will contain their cover letter and resume, but it will also have Richard's breakdown on those candidates. And we do internet inquiry as well on all of those candidates to see if there's anything outstanding out there that we need to be aware of and that you folks need to be aware of. So you'll get a packet on each one of those candidates. Yes, right?
You know, oftentimes, a question arises at this stage when we make this presentation. What, how do you select these candidates for interviews? And part of our process here is, we want to take the candidates that look the most promising, and even the ones that look sort of semi-promising. And we want to make sure that we vetted as much as we can with these candidates before we sit down with the council and spend time with you. We don't want to waste your time on candidates that simply aren't credible, that aren't going to meet your needs. So as part of this process, what we'll do is, let's say we get thirty applicants, we might pick ten, twelve, fifteen, seventeen, depending upon how deep the quality goes. We'll probably pick a couple that you're going to ask us about, why don't you interview these guys? Well, now, you know where the line is. That's the line where we cut off and pick a couple that were only marginally qualified. And still look at those folks, just to make sure you knew we did our own duties.
Description, the interview process isn't your typical ask a question, get an answer interview. I try to do a little more of a conversation with the applicants. We have our topics that we'll go over that I've kind of got marked out as some of those characteristics or skills that you're looking for. But I wanted to conversate with them. Because there's some managers out there and people out there that can really do well in an interview, not really they are. And so trying to get them into that more natural condition in that conversational mode, you can get a little better handle. Characteristics they have, and where are their ethics truly at. They can answer all the ethical questions perfectly, but do they really act the way they say they will act? And try to put that information into some kind of an objective sense for you to handle and have as you start reviewing those as well.
Absolutely. And any questions at this time where we move forward? All right. So then, once we have all those materials put together for you folks, we'll do the work session. And Richard and your project manager, Brenda, will sit down with you and review all of those candidates and their strengths and weaknesses and our recommendations as to whether or not they should move forward to your final in-person interviews. And at that time, you will get to choose the finalists that you want to move forward in that process. And we will also go through what you want those final interviews to look like. So with a city manager, we often, or most of the time, will recommend and find that using multiple panels so that you have a variety of folks in the mix that the council is able to get input from. As part of your decision-making process is truly valuable, as well as if you would like to do a community reception and open up, have an opportunity for the community members to come in and meet those finalists. And we can have comment cards for them to provide their thoughts and feedback on, as well for the council to have as additional information and data to really engage the community in that process. Richard or Greg, is there anything else you'd like to add in that as far as?
One thing I would add is, we're going to provide you, I'm sorry, Kate, I stepped on you. I apologize. I provide you with a variety of options, some suggestions of what it's worth, where it's worth, and what it feels comfortable and natural, and what it is best for you. So once we get to the final interview, we'll go through the process, and Richard's going to be there to facilitate. We're going to work with you the entire day. We have that timeframe. We're going to work with you to help identify a leading candidate. So if you find a leading candidate, we're going to help you with negotiations on salary, and work you through the process until both parties come to a yes, and negotiate, help you negotiate that final contract.
One thing I'll stress as we go through the interview process and looking at this is you be excited about your choosing. Don't pick somebody because you have five candidates and, okay, this one will do. You need to be excited. And we'll keep trying until we get the one that is the right fit for you.
That's a great point, Richard. Thanks for bringing that up. If nobody rings the bell loud enough at the end of the day, we're going to encourage you not to select. I'd much rather go back out, repeat that part of the process, get the candidate that you have the right feeling and you're excited about. I'd much rather have nobody get selected that do that process than get along perfectly. So really, I think, Kate, was there anything else you wanted to add? Or is that, I think that's the end of the process and perhaps end of our presentation, at least at this point now?
Yep. So with questions that you folks have?
Well, I was wondering, with city our size and where we're located, how many applicants do you believe that we will be able to have?
Well, I can get you a whole bunch of applicants if I advertise it indeed and on monster.com. I'll get you a bunch.
Okay.
Oh, you want good ones? Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. You know, honestly, if your salary is aggressive, I mean, and in market, you're a good city that's been well managed, you've got a good reputation, we're going to have to find people that want to live and work in La Grande for the same reasons you do. The cities where we've, in Creek County, do you recall how many we had at Creek County?
County, we just, I just finished that one. And, you know, it's in the east, it's in the middle of a cavern in the mountains there, kind of out of the way. And they had twenty-three applications. And so, and we really tried to pitch that one as, hey, here's this lifestyle, here's what you're coming to, is this the place? And, you know, we had, we had some of those applicants that wouldn't have fit at all. And they got screened out, but ended up with a good candidate. And they've selected their new manager. And that was actually their first manager ever. The county actually changed their form of government to a county manager form. So, and that was going to be a difficult thing. There's no history. There's no, it's going to be a challenging experience because their county commissioners are not used to having a manager. Their cities, their county staff isn't used to a manager. And so there's going to be some challenges. But we got twenty-three that were interested in that. And I think ended up with probably five that were really familiar with the area, actually, too.
I have one more question, and that would be, while you're, you're going to be the lead project manager, I'm assuming, right, Richard? Would you be having another, would you be doing another search for cities our size at the same time you're doing ours? So candidates could be split between us, the same people, looking at several cities?
Probably GMP will be doing other searches. And I do have access to those, that information, who's applied in those other positions. But quite frankly, I'm retired, and I like being retired. And so, and I like spending time with my grandchildren. And so I, I will be dedicating my time, hopefully, and it depends on whether there's another one in Oregon, but right now, it doesn't look like it. I would be putting my time to this position and moving it forward as best as I can, and trying to find those people that would fit in here. I do know, in looking at the schedule, I have a two-week trip to Jacksonville, Florida for my thirteenth grandchild, her, his birth. And so I do have that, but it's right after we put the profile together, when it's gone out and it's advertising, and nothing's happening then. So I'll be able to handle that from there. But, yeah, I'm looking forward to it. And one of the things we do have at GMP is we have a great application process that we can go in and look and see who's applied or who are other semifinalists in some of the other communities around the Pacific Northwest. And if there's any candidate there that might work well in this position, then we can, we can encourage those applications to get into this position as well.
Thank you.
My question for you is, why, as the city of La Grande, should we pick your company to help us pick one of the most important spots of leadership in our community?
Great. Well, you're going to get the frog to answer the question. Sorry, can I have my permit?
That's a great question. What differentiates us from our competition, and why should you hire us?
Well, I would offer that on the very first page of our presentation to you is probably the best answer. We've done more city manager searches in Oregon than any other company, period, in the last year and a half. We've done six successful city administrator, city managers, county manager searches. So what does that mean? That means we have better contacts with potential candidates out there, our reputation in terms of as a search firm is outstanding with the candidates. They trust us, they wanted to work with us, they know that we'll give them the straight, you know, straight information on a city. And on top of that, we've also conducted another fifteen, actually more than that, eighteen city manager, city administrator searches in the western United States. So that means we have all of those candidates that might also be potentially available as potential candidates for this search. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we have ten working, ten former city managers as consultants working at our company. We work as a team. And Richard alluded to this earlier. We have a Monday meeting every Monday morning where we talk about every search. And we talk about, as an example, if we were to be fortunate enough to be selected here, Richard would be bringing up, hey, I'm doing La Grande, all my colleagues out there, who do you know, your contacts, or who should I be reaching out to? And suggest names I'll give a call to, of the ten other city managers in our company. And we started working their contacts also. So we work as a team. So that's, I think, probably the last thing I would offer is, I've been in this work now for twenty-three years, and you can see the quality of the materials, as it's evolved from my last company to this company now, and to where we're at in terms of our presentation materials. I think it's second to none. The feedback we get from candidates is they really appreciate the thought that goes into our profiles because they can trust it. It's not cookie cutter, it's not just bringing up the same format and plugging in different names and numbers in the right spot. We treat the city of La Grande as selected as if you're our only client. That's how you'll feel about the whole process. So I hope that, I hope that answers your question.
It does. Is there any directors that have any questions? We haven't asked that. I thought it'd be a great one now. I mean, truly, I mean, all of you are going to be helping us pick this position. So we really do want to hear your questions as well.
Greg, I don't see any questions. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, you know, I guess I don't have any more questions, per se. I mean, I know you'll make a good decision. We wish you the very, very best, even if we're not selected. But we hope we are selected. We want to work for you. We want the LP to be successful and be part of the success story. So with that, I'll say thank you so much for your time tonight. And again, I want to wish you the very, very best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care, everybody. All the best. Good night.
May.
Bye.
I guess I'll just leave that one running so it stays up on the website. So, a lot to consider. Couple of things that I think would be helpful if we took a little bit of time to also start thinking about is, regardless of which is selected, the council needs to decide, how many panels are we going to be doing? What does that look like? Who should be on them? How are we going to go about that process? So I think, start thinking about that a little bit, and then just kind of shift the conversation initially to, of these three organizations, where's the comfort level? What are your thoughts? What do you think?
My comfort level was the last person, without a doubt.
That fed in shoulders. The other two, in terms of professionalism, presentation, they were ready tonight.
Yes.
And that was clear.
It was nice to have all those three people that are telling us what they're going to do.
They come to the interview?
What would be the advantage of using the same one that's doing the fire chief? What would be the advantage of having the same company?
I don't know that there's a distinct advantage. You know, they already have the information about the community.
Correct.
There are not a cost savings associated with doing that. The, so, and it's a different lead that's working on that. So you'd have, you know, some similar offers, but generally...
So there's no true advantage then, to go with the same?
I don't, I don't think that there's a distinct advantage that it would be, we should do this one over that one. You know, I can, I can speak for me personally, I've gone through three processes with Greg Proffman during my career. And, you know, one of those, I was joking with someone the other day, the individual that the city hired is who I would have hired for that particular city. And having, having, you know, gone through kind of the bedding that they do for three different positions over the years, what he said to you, what the team said to you is what I personally experienced as a candidate.
Like, they gained prepared for this interview?
And they've done a lot. You know, the list of all of the managers that they've placed in substance.
Yeah, it is pretty in-depth what they've done with the city managers and city administrators.
I looked at more of, they've done a few around us versus the other ones.
Correct, right.
So they actually know our community and our cities.
Yeah.
Plus, the person in charge is, you know, kind of from Pendleton, fifty miles away.
Oh, yeah.
How could you not ask? I mean, someone, I'd hope you'd come. And then with La Grande, you know, being in Pendleton. But I think the last one did a really good job.
And I think Richard would be really easy to work with, I do, too. I just got that.
Quarter century as a city manager, he knows. It's a similar-sized city. I think they've got a lot going for them. The other is just, I think, in terms of feedback.
What I'll do then, based on this consensus, is I'll move forward. That will have a formality on the March agenda to do it. But I'm going to go ahead and move forward with this. So I would like to get a little bit of feedback from the council. Perhaps this is a good opportunity for the director to kind of chime in as well. It would be helpful to have a feel from the council in terms of what you're looking for at panels. Clearly, the city council will be a panel. I think there's a consensus that the directors will be a panel. Do you want an additional panel or two? And what does that look like? And I'll just kind of back up to, when I was hired here, we had the directors, we had the council, and then we had a community leader panel. That was made up, if memory serves, from someone from EOU, chamber director, school superintendent, back then we had Union County Tourism. So it was all agency representatives. There were no at-large citizens as part of that.
I've had several citizens asked to give input. And I don't know what that would look like. I mean, you could have just a meeting, or have them give suggestions. I don't know if they need to go deep into the process, but I've got a whole list written on the back of a menu from all the cool news in the choir.
Well, one of the things that, and I can't remember what, two of them may have mentioned this, but one of the things that you can do, and I think we did it when we did Ryan Harvey's Police Chief searches, we had a community forum, and we actually asked people to submit comment cards about the candidates. And so having a reception in conjunction with kind of the finalists, where people can get to know the candidates, and maybe just, you know, be able to provide some feedback. That's something that could be done.
The interviews public?
None of the, none of, none of the interviews that I participated with the city of La Grande were open to the public.
Would they have access to see what their resume was? I mean, if they were to fill a comment card, would they, would they need to know?
They'd need to know a little bit about?
It would just be from the interactions at the reception.
Oh, at the reception, okay.
I don't know that it would be wise to have a community member panel. And realistically, that's what we're elected for. Like, we are elected to represent the citizens, and that's the hat we wear. And if we wear it well, then we will choose the right candidate. But I think it opens But I think it opens up a lot of opportunities for special interests, for people who have a bone to pick.
Yes.
I'm not sure that that is the image that we want to project toward a potential candidate. I think, I think we keep it in-house. I think it would be fair to consider something like, you know, people who specifically have a stakeholder with the city manager. So if you want to talk about Main Street or economic, you know, development groups, and I think, Robert, you're in the best position to probably advise us and say, you know, I think it's important that these groups maybe have some level of interaction on this, but that would be my, my consensus.
One person in particular who wrote me a letter that I talked to you about, I think, is a local business CEO, so I think that's valid.
I agree with Dave. You know, I, I think we keep it close. We were put in our position to make decisions, and this is probably going to be one of the biggest ones we make.
Because I've been...
The directors, I think they need to have their say in it because they're going to be working with this person, and so their, their input is very valuable. So I think they need to have just as much say as we do. Of course, we are the ones making decisions. The interest group, I think, is a great idea. I think, you know, superintendent, hospital, you know, these, those people are in charge of big portions of our community. I think they should be another one to have a say in it, but as citizens, just individuals, no, I don't think we need to open up that far.
I don't think stakeholders should be give, they should be able to give some input, but we are still...
We still, yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure EOU and the hospitals should just necessarily be included in that. Again, people with direct, I mean, who do you meet with, Robert? That would be my question.
Yeah, I think, I think the players that we would want to have as part of that is, I think, someone from ODA. I think the director of the Northeast Oregon Economic Development District. I think the superintendent of schools. I do think someone from EOU, because we do have some overlap there. I think there's some value to having someone from the hospital, not so much for the benefit of the city council, but for the benefit of the candidate.
Right.
Because if I'm interviewing to come here, things that I'm personally interested in are schools, hospital, those sorts of things. So, you know, we would like to, I think, position ourselves through that panel that that is also a promotion of our community. So, and I think reaching out to directors and talk about, you know, who else, who else do we think should be on that? And then, as part of the council decision of, yeah, we buy into that or not, makes sense. But the messaging that I'm hearing is it needs to be an agency or an organization that has a direct connection. Chamber of Commerce is one, they have a director right now, but that's another one. And I'm sure there are, there are others. I don't know whether or not we would want to expand that to perhaps the chair of the planning commission as an example. That might be one, just simply because of the nature of that committee and the involvement with some of the other elements of the city. I need to get my brain wrapped around that one a little bit more, but I don't think we would expand it to beyond, you know, eight or ten people.
Does that need to be a panel, or would that merely be a, you know, meet and greet in this area?
So, so I think two things. I think as far as, as part of putting together the candidate profile, there's going to be a lot of stakeholders that we're going to share with the firms saying, hey, here are some people you should talk to. You know, Anderson and Perry is going to be on that list. The hospital's absolutely going to be on that list. So that's going, so there's, and, you know, so those are some players that we're going to say, we would like you to talk with them about the community. They may not all be on the community member panel, agency panel, that we're interviewing. And keeping in mind, and again, I can't remember which one said it, but generally, those panels aren't going to come in and say, okay, this is number one, this is our number two, this is our number three. It's strengths and weaknesses of the candidates, because being sensitive to the fact that it's the council's decision, and I think with the directors as well, not saying, hey, order rank them. You know, I've been with the panels like that, and Mary Ann, I think, was on one of those committees, and we had a disagreement on panel members on who should be selected for one of our key director positions, and it was a little bit ugly because it was like, I want this one over that one. So you have to be really cautious about what you're asking that panel to do, and I think it needs to be just to provide some pluses and minuses to help the council make a better decision about who would work well with these agencies and who would be the best fit for us.
Well, then why would you need to have a panel if you were going to have those people talk to the person individually?
The initial conversation with the stakeholders is to build the profile of the candidate.
Okay, yeah, you're right, because I did that with the fire chief.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's sort of, that, you know, what are you looking for?
Right.
You know, asking, asking the university president, what are you looking for in a, in a city manager for the community you're in? The answer may be a little different than the CEO of the hospital or the superintendent of schools, but I think all of those are valuable pieces for GMP to hear as they're building that, just as, you know, each of you individually, you know, the directors. One of the things that I, that I wanted to touch on as part of this is they're going to want to know what's working well and what's not. And I want to be crystal clear with all of you, and this is very important to me personally, that is not about me. There are some things that I do really well, there are some things that I don't do really well at all. And I, I would implore you not to answer that question in terms of, well, if I say this, is it going to make Robert feel good or bad? That should not enter into your mind. That's a conversation that you as the ones that are going to be doing this this time next year without me sitting in this chair, you need to get the best person that makes the most sense for our community. And so please, 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 I know some of you would never have thought of that, please don't, don't temper your answer in terms of, well, what's Robert going to think when he sees a fan that says he wants someone that, you know, doesn't like rocks painted purple in the city.
And Seahawks?
Yeah.
Well, I tell you, I had someone come up to me and say, you know, we're going to get somebody that's going to hire a Seahawk fan to be the next city manager. So my takeaways thus far are we'll look at some potential agencies for a panel. We will move forward with GMP, we'll do a formal thing at the, at the March council meeting to kind of check that box, but we'll get them going to, again, start thinking in terms of the items that you heard them asking about, and from all of the proposals, you saw a theme on things that they're going to want to know, so start kind of formulating that.
I'm sorry, I just have one more question regarding the public.
Yeah.
Is there any other formal way to have them realize that we do really care about their opinions because we are representing them and we want to make sure that we're hearing those opinions? So it sounded like we weren't even going to accept, like, the cards that we were just talking about, like the, I guess I'm just not hearing how the public actually gets to have a say unless they're coming directly to us as counselors.
So, one of the, one of the challenges that city councils have, I'll get on one of my kind of soapboxes, is the people that show up at this podium on any given Wednesday, in my experience of doing this for over twenty years, the vast majority of the people that come to this podium to share information with the city council, this community and every other community in the, in the world, is to share with you what they're not happy about. And the, it's, it's rare when someone comes up to this podium and say, hey, I just wanted to show up to tell you what a wonderful job you're doing as a council.
Right.
So people with an axe to grind, people with an agenda, are the ones that tend to gravitate towards those opportunities to try to influence the decision. And so it's important to be really cautious about the way that you set an expectation for what they, what you're willing to do with the input. And if, if you want the city to vote on who the city manager should be, I think we have a city in Union County that does it that way, maybe it's their city reporter. But, you know, I think several of you have commented, you're elected to make these decisions and represent, and if the city is not happy with who's in the chair over there, they can change who's in the chair up here to change the person in the chair over there. So it's a, it's more of a kind of holistic answer. I, I would strongly encourage not to try to set an expectation on individual members of the community that it's their choice who is going to be the next city manager, because that's your...
But you can ask the people who talk to you, like, what are you looking for?
Absolutely.
Right, well, I just, I'm just curious if there's any other way to get a broader sense, because we are only seven individuals out of twelve thousand.
We also don't want twelve thousand people.
A one-hundred percent agree. I one-hundred percent agree, and I'm on board with what David was saying, like, I'm there, I just want to make sure that we are casting as broad of a net as possible when considering our options.
I think those people who want to have an opinion will get a little bit of...
Yeah.
And, and that's also something that you can certainly talk to the consultant about, saying, hey, you know, when we, when we, when we are doing this, what have you seen that has been helpful, what is not helpful, and then you as a council can say, yeah, we want to do that, no, we don't want to do that, and really put that together. And, you know, I do know Richard, he's a very solid city manager. He is going to really give you a good perspective. And so I think that's, I think that's going to be really helpful to him. Other thoughts? Well, I thought it was a pretty good session.
It was really good. Yes, sir.
If you're going to open it to directors?
Yes.
I just wanted some clarification on any other council plans of the process, because I got an email from one of you that said, hey, we want to talk to the staff about what you want to see the next manager. Just great, that's fine. Are there any other things behind the scenes you guys are wanting from us in the future that does include a consultant?
I think any of, you should share your thoughts with all of us.
So what would be the best way to do that?
Good question. Another work session, if they could share what they want.
Because I think there's going to be some interviews happening, which is great, but also how, would it be helpful to have a group discussion about that?
Yeah, I, um, we could do a work session. And essentially, it would be, you know, the council talking to the directors on, you know, what are things that you're looking, looking for in the next city manager? One super important cautionary tale, that absolutely cannot have anything to do with your current city manager. So it's not, it's not Robert's really great at this, or Robert's really bad at that. It is looking forward, what are we hoping, you know, what is, what are, what are things, what are traits, what experience, what's, you know, what do we want to see in our next city manager? Not a compare and contrast.
And I just also want, like, what's, what's, what's going to be demanded of our time? Because at some point, it's going to be spring, and we're really, some of us are going to get really busy, busier, and I'm just wondering, are there things in the works that we don't know about yet? And I'm just wondering if, you know, we can plan ahead for.
I mean, I know that I am making appointment with everybody, and Denise and I are going, and I think that's what all the councils should do, and I didn't do it alone because I thought, why take up, if everybody did it, it'd take up a lot of your time. But we could have three, but we couldn't have four.
So what? I think that would be better if we did it in a work session, we could all...
All at one time.
She can hear it all at the same time.
Yes.
From a, from an efficiency for both the council and the director.
And then they're not interviewed like three different times.
That might be a better idea for everybody.
One meeting, everybody talks.
Yes.
Get it out on the, when everybody tries to walk.
And I would like that to happen as soon as possible before we even really make any more decisions, because I value our directors from what I, what lists.
Well, we can, well, this is probably consulting too, though, is the consulting group is getting part of that, right?
Well, they're going to, they're going to, they're going to be talking to the directors.
Right.
They're going to be talking to you all individually, but then also collectively. I think there's value, I think there's value in the leadership team. Ideally, sometime within the next two weeks while I'm somewhere warmer. Put together a work session.
Yeah.
Mike is going to be the interim city manager, so he can set up the Zoom meeting. I, I think that has great merit, and so, what, next Monday? I don't know what does that...
Monday after.
Monday after?
I'll be gone next week.
It is a holiday.
It is a holiday.
So February twenty-fourth?
I'm not here, I'm somewhere warm.
We could all go somewhere warmer and...
It's not the charter, you can't do that.
You can't, you can't do it outside the city limits.
Sorry.
I know. Yeah.
I could do Monday the third, I can't on the twenty-fourth.
March third?
Did everybody else do March third?
I'm, oh, twenty-fourth is out.
Yeah.
What about the directors? March third, sound good to everybody?
I will be...
Oh, take that off? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
You'll have to zoom in?
Does it have to be before the March tenth?
It should be.
Because then Robert won't be here.
You could do it, you could do it on a different day.
What if we do a Wednesday?
Yeah.
So instead of the, well, you've had a conference.
You're talking about doing it, now, is March fifth the council meeting?
It is, yes.
Yes.
I'm here on the nineteenth, but not on the twenty-sixth.
Is the full council here on the fifth? Yeah, what you, what you could do is...
Or go after.
Go after. We could just put, you could just put a work session to follow the council meeting.
Oh, okay.
And that would be, that would be a simple solution. Most of, you know, all the council's already going to be here, doesn't, you don't have to give up an extra evening.
Late night.
What about the directors? Does that work for them on their long days?
Right.
I need snacks.
I like it.
Oh, you want us to give snacks?
No, no, I didn't say that. We might need snacks.
Is our fifth meeting look very heavy at the moment?
On March fifth? I guess there's pollution, there's ornaments.
Can I be my record?
The directors not to add anything.
It is not, it's the TRT ordinance that should be created. It's, it's going to, it's a fairly light one, let's do that.
Because if we can run through the meeting quickly with less questions, in other words, let me do my thing quickly. I do have the record, so we can make it faster if we wanted to, but then we go on to the work session, not taking away anything from that, but at least then, if that would work for all the directors as well, then we get everybody in the same room at the same time.
So the nineteen, like, Wednesday, the nineteenth will work?
No, you're not going to be here for the council meeting. Are you not going to be here for the council meeting?
No, I'm here for the council meeting, I'm just trying to not have the directors stay here.
But I mean, if we can get it done, it won't be much later than we usually do.
Raise your hand if March fifth works.
It may just be late, because I'm going back.
How about that?
I think the majority.
We'll set it up for that. Okay.
Can we request that the meeting packet for the original meeting be out a couple days earlier than normal? Just so we have more time to review, so we don't have as many questions the day of the meeting?
Sign up the city council packet. Yeah. It would be early, it's out a week before the meeting.
Okay. Okay. I just know it's been out like on the Thursday before, I guess. I just know it's been out like on the Thursday before, I guess. I don't want to put the pressure on you anymore, I just want to make sure that if...
Oh, we'll get it done.
Justin wants to...
I don't have no problem getting it done.
Get through that meeting.
With that, thank you, everybody, for coming, and...